Okay. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Good afternoon. This is the briefing portion of the planning commission meeting for April nineteen, twenty twenty-two. We're going to start with an access check for commissioners. Commissioners, if you could, everyone turn on their screen. Let me know you're there. Looks like we're good thus far. I can do a roll call. Commissioner Askey.
Here.
Commissioner Blackwell. Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Burton Falk, present. Commissioner Dietrich, here. Commissioner Dick.
Here.
Commissioner Mango.
Present.
Thank you. Chair Mordor is not here today. And Commissioner O'Neill.
President.
Thank you very much. Welcome again. This begins the briefing session for the planning commission for April nineteen, twenty twenty-two. Briefing means that the cases are heard as a preliminary public presentation for initial questions from the commission. Public testimony is not taken at this time. A reminder to the presenters to please speak clearly, describe which slide you are presenting to assist those that are via audio. I'm going to read our agenda for today. Under briefing, we have two items. Agenda item A, DCP-HN-2021-00821, eighteen hundred Lay Street. Briefing item B, which is DCP-ZDR-2019-08238-45546, Baum Boulevard. I won't go through the rest of the agenda, just the briefing here now. We're going to start with briefing agenda item A, and that will be DCP-HN-2021-00821 at eighteen hundred Lay Street. It's a historic nomination for the Troy Hill Firehouse, and that will be presented by Ms. Flynn.
After. Oh, my goodness. Good afternoon, everybody. The Troy Hill Firehouse is located at eighteen hundred Lay Street. It's a two-story brick structure. It's now used for civil service-type activities such as voting, et cetera. Thank you, Ann. It was constructed in the Beaux-Arts style with Romanesque influences. It is a fine example of Beaux-Arts style architecture done in a vernacular localized interpretation. The exterior is composed of white-yellow brick on the facade and sides, native to the region and popular with German immigrant communities of the north side and hilltop neighborhoods, while the rear of the structure is composed of red brick in the English Bond style. And if you could put the slides forward one, please. Go forward, please. Thank you. That's current day photo. The decorative brickwork continues up the central column of the facade, acting as a squared, almost Italian-esque tower, suggested of a bell tower. A deep-set cornice visually marks the second story from the roof line and parapet on the facade. This was actually the second firehouse to be located on this property. The first one can be identified from the Allegheny City Hopkins maps from eighteen ninety, and this previous firehouse was known as Engine House Number Eleven. As the neighborhood grew, there a need for a larger firehouse was identified, and therefore, this property was constructed in nineteen oh one. But a little bit of history of the area. In seventeen eighty-nine, that portion of the reserve tract directly opposite the city of Pittsburgh was divided into orderly lots with the rest of it comprising new reserve township. This settlement was called Allegheny Town. It was not long before German-speaking immigrants began to flock to the area as industry, language, culture, and religion already established by the Rickenbach and Vogelti families made them feel more at ease in a strange new land. The immigrants originally came from Alsace-Lorraine, Hesse-Darmstadt, Bavaria, Deutch Town, and Wurtemberg in Switzerland. The eastern section of Allegheny Town shortly became known as Deutch Town. And the area right below Troy Hill, called Spring Hill, was first nicknamed Swiss Hole. By nineteen hundred, the neighborhood had its own trolley-run incline plain and reached its peak of population of ten thousand inhabitants, and that's taken from the Troy Hill citizens' history. Can you move the slides forward, please, Ann? Okay, there's a Sanborn map from eighteen eighty-two, and then above it is the side of the building. Can you go one more, please? I believe there's four slides. Okay, so you can leave it on this one. So the Historic Review Commission and the nominator felt that this property was eligible under several different criteria, as an exemplification of an architectural style with elements of Beaux-Arts styling and white-blond brick common to Pittsburgh. It exhibits the influence of Italian and its style immensely popular in Pittsburgh. The commission also felt that this property was significant as the work of an architect. The architect's name was Joseph Stillberg, and he was once a prolific architect in Pittsburgh, having designed both major commissions such as the exposition buildings as well as many minor commissions, particularly in his home on the north side, with a notable extant example of the Eberhardt and Ober Brewery, which is the Penn Brewery today. Having been born in Germany, his work exhibits the fine attention nature-derived detail, often called Art Nouveau, and the highly ornamental styles of Romanesque Beaux-Arts. He was well-known both for the quality of his craft as well for being the mentor of another notable Pittsburgh architect, Frederick Osterling. As one of a handful of Stillberg's works to retain integrity and to remain excellent, this resource retains significance for its association with him. The commission also felt that this property was significant of its representation of a cultural, historic, and archaeological-related theme. Not long into Troy Hill's history, the neighborhood gained its own fire station and has remained in that corner, albeit from different forms within different street names and numbering systems, in the nearly a hundred and fifty years since. With the location of the central intersection of this otherwise remote neighborhood, it's rare to see a photo of a parade or gathering in Troy Hill that does not feature this resource. It was a key part of the neighborhood settlement and an important factor in its identity. And if you look at the photo on the screen right now, that's a postcard photo of Troy Hill from way back when, and this building here. To the left is the fire station as it looked back then. In nineteen oh seven, following Allegheny's absorption to Pittsburgh, the official name was changed to Fire Company Number Fifty-One and renumbered, resulting in its present Number Thirty-Nine designation. At its closure point, it was the oldest extant fire station structure in the city. And as previously mentioned, the commission also felt that property was significant as a local landmark or presence in the city. If you've looked at the nomination, which I hope you have, there are photos of parades and things that always go past the building. So this structure, when you talk about identifying a landmark in a neighborhood, I mean, this is the definition of that, because this is really, in front of this building in this open area, is really the only place up there for folks to have civic events. And as a result, the photo, there are photos of the building in every sort of publication that you can think of. Overall, the firehouse retains a high level of integrity. And if you notice, if you can notice the cupola, the central tower in this photograph with the domed cupola at the top, and you can go back to, I think, the second photo, please. You see, that's not there anymore. However, the remainder of the building is intact for the most part. None of the sizes of none of the sizes of the brick openings have been expanded, and when they have been in field, it's done with a very easily reversible material. So should this become a you know, a landmark or a property, a private property seeking historic preservation tax credits at some point, the arched windows, and if you could go forward one more, Ann, please? And these windows on the side can very easily be fixed because the brick has not been changed. So I think for this reason, you know, the commission feels that the property has integrity, and they voted to provide a positive recommendation to city council. And I must say, you know, this is one more of our set of firehouses that we have designated as historic, including the seven-hundred Filbert Street property, which you guys just looked at relatively recently, the property on Arch Street, probably on Boulevard of the Allies. So it's nice to be collecting all of these up because they may be privatized at some point. So that is my presentation for you. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Sarah. Very good presentation. Love all the pictures. It looks like Commissioner Dietrich has some questions or comments.
Thanks, Sarah. I really appreciate your presentation. I want to thank Preservation Pittsburgh for nominating the Troy Hill Firehouse. These are really gems in our neighborhoods, and people get obviously very attached to them. So I think it's a terrific nomination. Thank you.
Sure. And I would like to say that this has the support from Councilman Wilson's office, as well as the community groups up on the hill. So I know they've been working on it for quite a while, even pre-pandemic. So it's nice that we're finally here for you guys to take a look at this.
And I do apologize. I was so quick to call on Commissioner Dietrich that I forgot to remind everyone that there is no public testimony at this time, but this is the time in which the commissioners ask questions, make comments, or discuss any concerns. Fellow commissioners, is there anyone else that would like to add anything related to this historic nomination? Okay, given none, I will again say, great pictures. You did a great presentation on this one. We appreciate you coming today. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Have a good day.
You, too.
Okay, so the next agenda item up for briefing is agenda item B, and that is DCP-ZDR-2019-08238 at fifty-five forty-six Baum Boulevard. This is a new construction of a seven- and nine-story residential structure, and presenting this will be Ms. Regus.
Thank you. And if I can just do a quick audio check, Bill Sittick, it looks like you have your applicant team in the room with you. Is that correct?
That's correct, Kate.
Okay, great. And your audio sounds good. So let me do a quick introduction, and then we'll pull up your presentation. So good afternoon, commission members. This is an application for the second phase of the Baum House, which this will be a residential-only seven- and nine-story structure. This went to the zoning board for several special exceptions and several variances related to height and FAR and distance from the residential zoning district, and those requests were approved. They are proposing a hundred and forty-two onsite parking spaces. DOMI has approved the transportation study, but they're still working with the applicant on some of the site details, including the curb cuts. The project is in the Friendship Neighborhood, but not within a registered community organization area or within the inclusionary housing zoning overlay. The stormwater management plan is under review by staff, and the project went through a staff design review and then the contextual design advisory panel in November of twenty twenty-one. Since then, the applicant has worked to address CDOT's comments, including better complementing this design of this building with the first phase, including the architectural verticality and refining the design of the building entrance. That is it for my, oh, I guess I should have said at the beginning, this is before you because it's in the Baum Center overlay, new construction. So with that, I'll turn it over to the applicants to make their presentation.
Thank you, Kate. Good afternoon, commissioners. This is Bill Sittick, representing the applicant. Laurel Real Estate Services with me is the founder of Laurel Real Estate Services, Mike Corning, and the project architect Jeremiah Brooks from Stantec. As Kate mentioned, this is Phase Two. This was designed from the outset to be complementary, for the buildings to work together for the reasons that we'll detail, and you know, the design taking into consideration and being complementary to the award-winning design of Phase One. And there are some economies of scale and from parking to utilities that were designed from the outset to make this project work. Kate indicated, not only was this initial two-phase design started many years ago now, but we actually were in front of the zoning board in February of twenty twenty. So it's been over two years since we had a zoning board hearing, and so the pandemic has created some challenges, but it's now full speed ahead. And we believe, just want to point out, in terms of the criteria, Kate mentioned the responses to the CDOT and staff comments, which we'll go through in some detail, but in terms of PDP compliance, the one thing in Kate's description of the project that came out, it's a unmixed-use building. There are joint amenities. There are amenities building, but it's all residential tenants. And the reason for that and that one ground-floor tenant space criterion in the PDP criteria having to do with individual design, the first floor is designed as individual spaces that could be used commercially, and the floor to ceiling would allow it, but the proposed use of that first floor is, as Mr. Corning will testify to, is really strictly for tenant occupancy. So with that, Mike, if you could present to the board the background for the project.
Thanks, Bill. Thank you to the commissioners and to the staff for your time today to present this exciting new project. You know, really building off the success of our Phase One project and establishing, you know, a presence in the community, we were really, you know, thrilled to be able to engage the community in a really meaningful way, which helped shape design pretty substantially. So that outreach, as Bill mentioned, has really gone back quite some time, but really involved the community, starting in two thousand and nineteen specifically on Phase Two. So you know, that had a lot to do with BCI, who really helped to spearhead kind of our initiative and got us in with Friendship Community Group and before Center Villa condominiums, which are right behind us there as well, and keeping Shady Side Action Coalition in the loop as well as we advanced our design and really kind of presenting this between before Councilperson Groves, Councilperson Straussberger, and just getting their input, which I think was also really helpful, just broadly trying to create an inviting and friendly corridor that didn't feel looming, but still had the density needed to accomplish our, you know, concept make it reality. So, you know, really, I think, you know, we wanted a really high design that honored the fabric of this unique corridor, this unique neighborhood. You know, complementing obviously Phase One, but then also having its own personality in a lot of ways. We have the continuity of the same design team across both assets, and although not identical, as Bill mentioned, they are meant to be complementary. So you'll see some kind of repeating themes that are more subtle, but we think is going to create a very, very impressive structure for the neighborhood. And, you know, we took into consideration a lot of the immediate community's comments and kind of desires, making sure that we were being sensitive to dark-skY requirements, making sure that, you know, we had the ability for the community to feel engaged by this asset, not cut off from this asset. And those are some of, you know, the really great elements that we're here to present before you today. Jeremiah?
Thank you. We can advance a few slides and just kind of review quickly. So just a site area context, the red boxes, kind of where the site's located along Baum Boulevard with Dapper Way in the rear, adjacent to Phase One. Next slide, please. And this is what Mike had spoke to about Phase One and its success. You know, we were very proud and privileged to be a recipient of AIA Awards and feels that it's a successful building from, you know, its function and place in the community. Next slide. And these are some contextual angles from Axon View, kind of its relationship massing-wise to Phase One and the area. So we mentioned there's a seven-story tower and a nine-story tower. The seven-story tower is along Baum Boulevard, and the parapet heights match Phase One. And then there's a nine-story tower to the rear along Dapper Way with two additional floors at the nine-story level. We're topped out at that parapet at a hundred foot eight inches. And if we go to the next slide, contextually, that falls within it falls within reason for what's the surrounding, with some closer buildings that are in access to a hundred and sixty feet, but we felt that going to additional stories and respecting the seven-story mass along Baum Boulevard was the contextual move. Next slide, please. So this is our overall site plan and kind of start to indicate the landscaping and the pedestrian route, how we're engaging with Baum Boulevard itself. To continue the landscaping along the face of the building, we've kind of inverted what was on Phase One. Instead of producing the green space between curb and building, bringing the sidewalk inboard, in reaction to some of the comments we've heard from the community, we've pushed the sidewalk back out to curb and then maintained the building setback from the lot line to engage with some landscape features. We do have a small, like, site wall, knee wall, that separates the private and public area. We are giving a fair amount of that area to increase the public way. The sidewalk right now on Baum is about nine foot eight, and through landscaping benches, some relief points along the facade, we're increasing that width to fourteen feet, plus or minus. Next slide. Continuing the landscaping that we use for Phase One, we're trying to maintain all native landscape with limited to no irrigation requirements, also trying to work within the palette of approved species from the city. These are a few of what we've got pending towards final design. You'll see along Dapper Way, we've got some off-street parking and our loading. All of that takes place off of Dapper. And as Kate had mentioned, we did speak with DOMI and are preparing our final curb cuts mission for that application. We also have a private drive off of Baum Boulevard. It's a one-way private drive, right turn only, and that was to allow access to the site, trying to alleviate any sort of stopping or pausing along Baum Boulevard and to help with traffic as well. Next slide, please. And this is just a follow-up landscape plan that gives a more graphic indication of count and location of those plants that were indicated in the color rendering. Next slide. This is a combined elevation on Baum Boulevard, featuring Phase One to the right, and as we had mentioned before, this, on the left is Phase Two, which is complementary, sort of a companion building in lieu of a copy of the success of Phase One. So the concept with that is the repeat materials found on Phase One, repeating several rhythms and conceptual ideas, but laid out in a new and unique way. In Phase One, we have the urban window, which is the silver metal panel that's found central of the building, and the seven-story mass along Baum Boulevard is that same material with similar window patterns as if it was unsheathed from the brick mass that it surrounded on Phase One. So the attempt there was to create a continuation and create a lighter building and then still have that tie to Phase One. As we had done that, there's also a series of loop, vertical louvers that connect some vertical elements similar to how certain windows on Phase One were grouped as well. So again, we're trying to play with the mass of it, break up the monotony and kind of link certain items to be a larger scale to not have it be so looming over Baum. We've also incorporated a large vertical element with a glass tower that is directly above our front entranceway with an awning that connects to Phase One as well. At the first level, we are using similar materials with the dark masonry that we used on Phase One. That's replicated as the first floor base of Phase Two, and then on the masonry backdrop for the nine-story tower, we're using a mix of masonry that will include a small percentage of that dark brick and including buffs and blond bricks as well to kind of lighten it up and kind of speak to more of the contextual brick found in and around the neighborhood.
Jeremiah, you might want to mention the sky bridge there in the walkway.
Correct. We are showing a sky bridge there that connects the rooftop decks from Phase One to Phase Two. That is a desire that, you know, we'd like to include that pending final budgeting and performance of the building.
So we'd like that to be approved, but not necessary for the final approval, since that may ultimately be the eat-out project, but we can show it if it is put in that it's acceptable as far as the design.
The next few slides we could advance are just additional elevations from the different sides. So this is from the side jar elevation, kind of shows how we've broken up the masses and kept materiality per mass, so it's a kind of a group of buildings contained within one building structure itself. So on the right-hand side of this slide, you see the vertical glass element at the farthest right, the seven-story mass that is the silversmith metal panel that is repeated from Phase One with a dark bronze connector, which is also a replicated material from Phase One, and then the masonry nine-story tower along Dapper Way. And then the rear elevation, very same concept, but on the backside, this is the nine-story tower and its relationship to Phase One. Got the masonry that gives an overall grid, and then the window opening itself kind of have a variation of openings and materials to create that same dynamic facade. And it is broken up with a vertical element to signify like the rear entrance and loading. Next slide. And this view would be from the common yard between Phase One and Phase Two. So again, all those same elements are consistent throughout. So we've got the nine-story masonry tower along Dapper, got some connective bridges or connective corridors between the nine-story tower and the seven-story tower, which is kind of that dark bronze there that relates to Phase One. And then at the first floor level, at the main amenity spaces and lobbies, we're trying to keep that all clear, visible, floor-to-ceiling or close to floor-to-ceiling glass as possible. at the main amenity spaces and lobbies, we're trying to keep that all clear, visible floor-to-ceiling or close to floor-to-ceiling glass as possible. Next slide. And these are some, get some Axon views to start to kind of tell a story of how the buildings connect and how these different masses are relating to one another. The, you know, the both towers of the building, seven-story and nine-story are parallel with Bond Boulevard. Whereas the glass element that is vertical, that does have a 10-degree skew to relate to the urban window within Phase One. So again, there's subtle, subtle plays that we've kind of developed to tie the buildings in together and how they can relate and how they situate themselves to the public way. That, I mean, the seat wall along the site can kind of be seen here too. To show like little pockets that will be landscaped and provide relief from the sidewalk that currently exists. Excellent. Again, this is just another perspective, trying to illustrate the connectivity. We do have a colored covered walkway from Phase One to Phase Two. And then, as Bill had mentioned too, the sky bridges that would tie the rooftop decks from Phase One to Phase Two. Excellent. From Dapper Way, just another perspective to kind of indicate how the buildings are tying together. To note too, that this nine-story mass is elevated, the first floor is cleared to allow for that parking and loading, similar to how Phase One is on, over the parking and loading as well. Next slide. And this would be just another perspective from from Bond Boulevard from the east, looking down at how the buildings, again, the goal was to align the parapets. So the seven-story mass is aligned with Phase One. And then having that projection of the glass tower at a slight angle would be a point of interest that really kind of indicates entrance and the place for the building. All right, next slide. This would be our, just another perspective from Bond across, across the street at the intersection there, looking into the building itself. So we see that we've got the recessed dark masonry at the first floor with the walkout units and private yards and the seat wall that does separate that from some of the expanded public way. And then the, again, that glass tower and entry, a sky bridge connecting to Phase One. Next slide. This was our material studies board. As you can kind of see, we've got some images from Phase One, combined with some inspirational images and then also some of the materiality that we plan on using. So again, that dark masonry, which is from Phase One, and then using a percentage of that mixed in with the reds buffs and tan bricks to create that nine-story masonry mass in the rear. There are some, some bridges in Phase One that connect for the corridor throughout the urban window. And that was where we were trying to link our, our sky bridge to connect the buildings as well as the covered walk on the ground floor to signify the entrance. Throughout all the materials, we've tried to create some depth too. So just like Phase One, metal panel is always recessed from masonry. We're creating the nine-story tower, same with the brick has several layers of recess and then the metal panel. Their window plane would be behind that. And then on the seven-story mass, we are creating some projections with louvers to create a little bit of interest and dynamic. And those projections will also have some shade and shadow cast on them throughout the course of the day to kind of create a different facade throughout, throughout the day that mimics the vertical windows from Phase One. Slide. And these are our perspective renderings from the public way. Again, we're trying to really create a densely vegetated and welcoming area that kind of ties the building in with the public way, creating some areas to rest and kind of blur the lines between the property and public way with some site amenities. This is a good shot too, that kind of illustrates those dark bronze fins, vertical louvers that are adjacent to the windows too, to create some dynamic shadows and elements along Boulevard. So it's not just a sheer face with the recesses to create a texture along Bond. Next slide. And this is approaching Phase One from, or approaching Phase Two from Phase One. Illustrates the same, same principles we were trying to tie throughout the buildings, having some recesses, the benches tying in, the covered block, a pretty signified front entry to welcome tenants and kind of engage the public way.
I think too, just, you know, one of the big questions we got are, you know, who are these people that live in this building, you know? And as we had these community meetings, a lot of which were held, you know, in the lobby and within the building, you know, we got to invite folks from Friendship, Bloomfield, Shady Side in and they got to experience and see kind of the, the diversity of our tenant base. And so what we're really excited is I think in kind of this idea of Phase One being an urban window that you're kind of looking into this building. You know, Phase Two is really kind of bringing that building out, kind of inverting it and bringing a presence at street level, which we're really excited to kind of engage the community really physically in that way with our, with our tenant base.
And next slide. And this is again, just a perspective to try and capture the whole building from the public way across the street and down a little bit to illustrate all the items that we're trying to capture here. Again, engaging the public way, the large vertical glass that signifies the entrance with the canopy and then louvers to create a texture along the long metal panel facade for the seven-story building or seven-story mass. This is just a clip from our stormwater management that was submitted. I believe we did have some comments that we have, are in the process of revising and resubmitting. We are meeting and exceeding the, the requirements for stormwater and the majority of that is done through onsite our tanks that would hold during a large storm event. And also through some vegetated roof and retention strategies. Mike had mentioned earlier, our sustainability goals, you know, reducing water or improving energy performance. Large floor-to-ceiling windows to increase daylighting and our water efficient landscaping. And one point that we were really focused on was the dark sky compliance. I know with Phase One, we don't have any building lighting, there's no like architectural accent lighting. And the same is true with Phase Two. We've gone through and all of our required site lighting for safety is, you know, we've ensured that it's down, downlighting, no uplighting to ensure there's no light trespass on the site.
And I think with the absence of retail will further, further mitigate any light pollution at street level.
This illustrates the master plan between Phase One and Phase Two. So on Phase One, we do have a large, the retail area that was between South Graham and Bond Boulevard. We are kind of replicating some similar spaces through the lobby and then tying that lobby into the lobby of Phase One as well through the covered bridge. And that area is just, again, we're trying to energize that area by providing it with large lobby, some work area so tenants can, can use that space throughout the day and evening. And there's other amenities for the building at the first floor to kind of create some through traffic and focus as well. We've got some bike storage. There's a few like conference area, conference rooms that could be used and adjacent to that as well as Laurel's onsite management office there at the bottom left of Phase Two, to kind of be able to keep an eye on, onsite and have, you know, significant presence within the building and the site.
Engagement is really big for our tenant base. I think, you know, we need the, the large amenity space to accommodate a lot of our programming. You know, curiosity of our tenants is, is really important. And so we try to help them discover new things about the city, about our communities. And so these are spaces that are, that are, you know, in a largely open and welcoming to an outside presence as well. So we're excited to have a larger platform to, you know, engage the community, engage this curiosity.
Next slide. We have engaged with Ricon as our CM on the job and developed this construction management plan. Through the development of the foundations, we are trying to not engage or not approach on Dapper Way throughout the project. Our shoring will be at property line and through the duration of a project, the, the goal is to maintain Dapper Way open. Along Bond Boulevard, we do have some lane closure to allow site access and lay down access to the tower crane that's indicated kind of along Bond, center of the property. And the next slide kind of goes into, describes some of, you know, our management strategy for that. In addition, what's over here, there, I know that Ricon had provided, similar to Phase One, a 24-hour monitored phone number. So that way, if there was any issue, someone will be able to react to it in real time.
Sure, I mean, having the continuity of Ricon, who also was the GC on Phase One, is really familiar with the neighborhood. You know, it's really essential, we're excited about their involvement for that continuity. You know, I think this was a big part, Ricon's already been in a lot of meetings with the community and the community has helped challenge me, help, help challenge Jeremiah and with StanTech and Ricon to come up with some really creative and solid solutions to ensure that Dapper Way remain open. We've further committed to that through a community agreement with the help of and support of StanTech and Ricon. So very, very pleased that we were able to get a amicable solution to keeping Dapper Way open.
Next slide. And then we get into a few of the plans for the building. So on our first floor, we've kind of already spoke a little bit about the amenity space, large, large lobby, all floor-to-ceiling glass at the, at the base of that glass tower to try and engage as many, have it be an activated storefront essentially. Laurel's field office will also be located there for building management. There, there's a few conference suites there, again, to pretend an access possibility for a gym. We do have a large bike, interior bike storage room, secure with, with access to that. And then along Bond Boulevard too, we do have several units that have lockout access. And then for the site itself too, we've really tried to make sure that it's barrier free. There is a little bit of gray change on the site that's made it a little challenging, but we think we've, we've got it figured out. So that way, we've got access from, from both the rightaways along Bond Boulevard and Dapper Way to both entrances. Next slide. So this is a typical second floor, but also kind of illustrates the courtyard area that's elevated on the, the second floor level as a walkout for, for tenant area. We've got a mix of studio and one bedroom apartments with also a few two bedrooms that are indicated there. The two-bedroom is the large living area, the two-bedroom is part of that vertical element. So that'll be relatively consistent with no dividing partitions or anything, be able to maintain that look for the duration of the building. But these are all tenant floors, we don't have any amenities or building amenities other than tenant resources. Next slide. So the mass on the bottom of the page would illustrate the nine-story, nine-story mass. But on the eighth floor, we would have the lockout and the potential for our rooftop deck, which we are providing some, some landscaping and green roof mitigation to help with stormwater. On the left, that sky bridge is indicated, you know, that's, that's a goal, but we'll see how that works out with final budget. And the next few slides talk about the parking and it's linked to Phase One. So to maximize the site and reduce some redundancy on the site between the two buildings, we are using the speed ramp from Phase One. The Phase One, we kind of assumed that would happen and have a, you know, a breakout area already pre-planned in Phase One to connect to Phase Two. And then in Phase Two will provide parking per the TIS report with the bicycle reduction. So this is two levels of underground parking. Just over the next, this slide and the next slide, showing how that is laid out and worked with that. We thought it was important to use as much of Phase One as we could to, you know, reduce the site of Phase Two and utilize what we've already built as infrastructure. Next slide is just a portion of that TIS report that was submitted and approved. And that was in regard to 200 units. I know right now our count is reduced a little to 198, but we're still holding that 142 as far as parking. And next slide. For accessibility, we are meeting for type A. All units in the building are type B and then we are providing the five type A units on multiple floors and it's split evenly between our micro type one and, or micro units, one bedroom and two bedrooms. So just kind of illustrating that our layouts, making sure that we had the studies that, that they do work for accessibility needs and that the site itself is accessible as well. Next slide. And thank you for your time and listening and I would appreciate any questions or comments. It's the end of our presentation, so happy to answer any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for the presentation. I'm just going to remind everyone that there is no public testimony. This is the time that commissioners ask questions, give comments. Commissioner Dick, it looks like you have your hand up.
Okay, yeah, couple of questions. I assume from your presentation that all the entrances are accessible, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and how many type A and B units do you have in the building?
All units of type B of the 98 and then we have two type A units for micros, two type A units for one bedrooms and one type A for two bedroom.
Uh huh, okay. And I assume because you didn't mention it, and it's not quite required yet, do you have any? I assume that you don't have any affordable housing in this or not, or do you?
The model that we have on, throughout our portfolio and specifically here at Bomb House, the first phase, and I think looking at the second phase is, is finding inclusionary opportunities is always important to us. We obviously hold very clear and distinct to us that, you know, federal fair housing laws are extremely important. So finding opportunities to accommodate a variety and diverse population is, is super important, especially for, for this community in particular, because of that, that community engagement, that curiosity with, with, you know, a diverse population base. So Phase One, we've had some great success with using our price point to drive diversity and we're really excited about what we have planned to do the same for Phase Two.
I highly encourage you to do as much of that as you could, that's so, so important. Thank you.
Helps everybody for sure. Thank you for your questions.
Any additional questions, comments, commissioners? Commissioner Mingo?
Thank you. What were some of the comments from the, the CDEP from the design advisory group? Have you not been to them yet?
Yeah, we have been and we've reacted to their comments. So one of, one of the comments was the vertical fins on the, the face of the building. That was to, we revisited that idea and reorganized them to kind of create the texture that was possibly missing through the depth on the depth on phase one. And we also addressed the first floor comments of adding additional glazing and then the glazing tower to signify kind of that entrance and weight binding for the front entrance.
One of the overall comments too, there were a couple of C DAP members that wanted it to more closely mimic phase one. And because of the success that it had, especially from their architectural community. And it was a balance between that and the comments from the neighbors about lightening the building phase two. So we kind of, as Jeremiah went through, he repeated it in a number of instances where they respond to phase one and take elements from phase one. But it was also in a lighter, a lighter way that was important to the community. So it was kind of a balancing act to have to take the success of phase one and then not to replicate it.
So in particular, I'm curious about what happens on the first floor. So we've, you're proposing not having retail on the first floor and I can sort of wrap my mind around that. But Kevin or Ann, I'm not sure who's running or Kate, who's running the slideshow. Could you pull up number 17 on their proposal? It's a it's a picture that is not labeled. Oh, it says perspective across bomb. There we go. So it looks like the first floor facade is is all brick. Can you explain what's happening on the first floor there?
Sure. So the first floor is is the same brick as phase one and then we have the windows that fill in. So I guess to meet the requirements for transmissible by the first floor, what we were able to do is that we have 100% glazing between the three foot and eight foot plane on the entry and the amenity space. And then we have about 60% glazing available on the residential lockout portions. And we're kind of achieving that through glazed doors, side lights and additional windows to the units. And then as a that equals out over the whole site, we've got our 70% of windows. And we've made some updates to that recently. This perspective is probably not 100% accurate, but we do have a fair amount of windows that are to the units themselves. I know in regard to that too, part of the part of the scope of work that shades will be supplied by the building and owner. So that way everything is consistent. There won't be you know, a variety of shades or anything of that nature.
Okay, so for the next, for the next time you come back to the commission, could you please provide some more detail about that particular facade or at least make it more accurate? Right now it looks like a brick wall. It reminds me of like a, like a, an industrial building for one story industrial building that's sitting underneath your big building. And if we're going to give up on this idea of retail, it seems, it seems like that that facade shouldn't be something that is so abrasive with with brick as you walk along that facade. So if you if the C DAP, I don't, I don't have the C DAP comments in our in our report, so I can't see them, but especially if C DAP mentioned wanting to have more transparency there, then I would like you to sort of update at least one drawing, which explains how that facade isn't so sort of abrasive and it doesn't have retail on the first floor. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingo. Commissioner Brown, you have some questions?
Thank you. Thank you for this report. It's greatly appreciated. It would be helpful if we had some clarity as to, I guess, letters of support as well from the community as they supported this project, one, two. If you could provide more statistical clarity as to the percentages that you guys are shooting for with regards to stormwater management, the use of the RTA. How much the vegetated roots will mitigate stormwater runoff? And I'm just looking for statistics and then just what you're shooting for as a projection. And then I didn't hear any clarity whether or not this was pursuing any lead certifications. That would be helpful. And then I would definitely want more clarity on, I heard a great response with regards to diversity. I'm very interested in what targeted percentage you guys are looking at with diversified units, whether you call it affordable diversity. I'm not sure what term to use it, but what percentage are you looking for that was so successful in building one that you want to mimic in building two? That would be very helpful for your next report.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Are there any other commissioners with questions or comments? Commissioner Dick, Dietrich, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on a few things. Yeah, echoing Commissioner Mingo, what that looks like the, you know, it could be kind of an endless wall of brick that first building has. When it goes to the hard brick, there's some windows, but I just want to see what that connection looks like also. What are the rents that you're talking about for these apartments?
You know, the rents at this, at this stage, which is, as you all are well aware, is a quite a moving target in today's economic uncertainties, but you know, we are kind of targeting a $2.50 kind of range for for that that rent.
So for the the micro, what are you talking about a month?
Those those micros can range, yeah, we're going to have quite a range, but I think, you know, right now we're going to see anything between, you know, 1,200 and, you know, really 1,800, depending on what that amenity package looks like. And so this is, you know, we pride ourselves on not being your your run of the mill multifamily product. We have some differentiation that is hyper amenitized. That's kind of not seen elsewhere with with furnished units and additional kind of service packages. So that's, that's kind of that range of what we're looking at. It's quite a range. So I apologize for for such an opaque answer there, but it's
So a 500 square foot apartment is 1,250 a month and a 900 square foot apartment is 2250 a month. Is that about it?
That that sounds like that would be right around that range now. Yes.
So so which of those would you call? I mean, are you getting any public subsidies for this?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And so what would you call, you talked about some kind of inclusionary. So I mean, what would you call affordable? The 400 square foot micro for 1,000 a month? Is that what you're thinking about?
So so one of the things that Baumhaus, the first phase was was kind of really notarized for in its in its unique nature was introducing what's kind of the shared suite concept, which, you know, has some co co-living is kind of was the tag frame, tag phrase at the time is kind of
We remember.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. So anyhow, it's it's really something that we helped introduce to Pittsburgh. It's something that has dramatically helped to increase, I think, that diversity and that diversity in our in our price point. So, you know, you know, we've seen the success of that in phase one. So we have some unit types that are as as little as, you know, $800 a month. You know, in in some of those product types, which which really help open up accessibility to this, you know, fantastic award winning product, but then, you know, one of the the top service models in the city, if I do say so myself.
Yeah, but it's a limit. It's, you know, we're pretty much most of it's market. We've got an idea of that. The next isn't for you, but it's my follow up from previous week and that's on our construction mitigation planning. And this is really for the planning department. I would like, and this would be, you know, for the developer, it's not your responsibility, but you would be able to go to a place with the planning department and see what other nearby construction projects are going on and what those construction mitigation plans go by. Why I'm saying this? Well, if you never have construction, you're never worried about competing plans or unsafe conditions. And the two weeks ago for Bill and your team, I complained that Forbes Avenue here in Oakland from the 3,400 to the 3,600 block has now has multiple construction projects with uncoordinated construction mitigation plans. The solution of many was to walk in the street. That's fine if you're 18 and it's daylight and you're on Forbes Avenue and you're fast and can run. But it really isn't a plan for other people. By total coincidence, I left the meeting after complaining to the department about not having coordinating or being able to see these plans. I went to the East End Food Co-op. There's two projects in the north and south side of Mead Street. They both had total inaccessibility for anyone walking and folks were walking in the street. Again, for anyone who is uncomfortable with that, it's not very good. There was a project. I don't know what happened. It's there on the west side of down the way on the other side of Dapper Way. I don't know if they're ever going to build anything. I assume across the street right where South Fairmont comes in, there won't be, it's not anything about your project, but for the planning department, I do wish and I hope some of my fellow commissioners can support me in developing a really easy, whatever it is, map or anything. So when folks have a project, they can see what's nearby and we as commissioners were passing these plans, not in isolation, but in understanding what risks exist when you have multiple construction projects across the same street or in the same block and what that means for pedestrians. Thanks.
Brilliant idea. And I would encourage you to also include authorities and other department construction as well, people you say, you know, public works. Because sometimes those unknown to the developer projects that I would, I would love to see a resource like that and be helpful to you know, participate for sure.
Thank you. Appreciate the addition. Absolutely critical too.
Thank you, Commissioner Dietrich. Commissioner O'Neil?
Yeah, thank you. On your Baum Boulevard facade, there are a couple of kind of features that are very light. If we could go back, I think Commissioner Mingo was looking at a slide. If you go back and slide, give us a repeat. Yes. So so you gave us the material slide, which is appreciated. It's a little hard to tell from some of these renderings which material is which in the white. I'm assuming the columns on the the ground level are different than what's above. But I have a matching kind of labeled plan to show that. Can you can you describe those materials?
Sure. So the the white metal panel is silver smith metal panels. So it's the same light silver panel that was from phase one. And the intent is actually that is the column enclosure as well. So kind of similar in the massing and the cutouts and extrusions from phase one, doing that same concept with phase two where the seven story mass comes down all the way to the ground and then the brick is recessed and pushed back about 18 inches to allow a little bit of texture and diversity in the facade.
That was a comment from C DAP. We helped incorporate as well.
Yeah, to make sure that the first floor was differentiated from the building mass itself, but with with some kind of consistency.
But Jeremiah, the the cladding on the column versus the facade, it's the same.
It's the same.
What is, okay.
Doesn't look the same.
I think it's just some graphical perspective. Yeah.
That's fine. That's why I wanted to ask. Okay. Thank you so much.
It'll look great once it's built.
Does that conclude your question, Commissioner O'Neil?
It does.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for your question.
Any other commissioners, questions or comments? Okay, seeing no more at this time, we thank you for the presentation and we look forward to seeing you back at this time. I just want to say that while we're concluding the briefing portion of the agenda, I'd like us to return back at about two 25. But I did want to make note of the agenda because there has been a change and a continuance. And at the sake of being fair to everyone's time, in case someone is waiting, the agenda will be approval of minutes correspondence under hearing and action, agenda item number one, D C P dash Z D R dash 2021 dash zero five eight seven five at 5941 Penn Avenue has been continued to May 3rd. A continuance was requested. So I'm sharing that so that in the event that anyone is waiting on that, you know that it will not be in and I'll be sharing that at the beginning of hearing and action as well. Okay, so I'll see everyone at 2:25. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
See you soon. Have a great day.
You too.
Thank you. Thank you for readmitting me.
We're on break, Holly, until
I know we are. I just want to say thank you very much for readmitting me.
Oh, yeah, me too. Thank you for readmitting me too.
Okay. Take care, Dana. Thank you.
You too.
You too.
Okay, Commissioners, as you start coming back in, please turn on your cameras so that I know that you're with me. In the meantime, I'd like to ask if the court reporter is here.
Hello, yes, LaShawn, this is Dylan, I'm here.
Hi Dylan, how are you?
I'm good.
Good to have you. Thank you. Giving Commissioners a few more moments, just to acknowledge that you are here. Given that, I am seeing that we are looking as if all the Commissioners are here, so I'm going to go ahead and begin the hearing and action portion of the Planning Commission meeting. Welcome, everyone. This is the hearing and action portion of the Planning Commission meeting for April 19th, 2022. Hearing means that cases are presented for action by the Planning Commission. During the hearing and action portion of the Planning Commission meeting, we will take public testimony with instructions to be given after each item is heard. Welcome to our applicant presenters. A reminder to you to please speak clearly, describe which slide you are presenting to assist those that are participating via audio. I'm going to do a roll call of attendance for our Commissioners. Commissioner Askey. Commissioner Blackwell.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Burton Falk, present. Commissioner Dietrich.
Here.
Commissioner Dick.
Here.
Commissioner Mingo.
Present.
Chair Mandor is not here today, and Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. I'm going to read through the agenda at this time. Under Agenda Item A, we have approval of Commission minutes. Agenda Item B, we will have correspondence. Agenda Item C, hearing and action. Under Hearing and Action, Agenda Item Number 1, DCP-ZDR-2021-05875 at 5941 Penn Avenue, has been continued. The continuance is to May 3rd, 2022. So for those of you here for that, please note, it will be continued again to be heard May 3rd. Agenda Item 2, DCP-CDR. Yes?
I'm so sorry, do we have to make a motion to continue it till May 3rd?
I don't believe so. There's been a continuance requested, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be actually on the agenda at all to do so. Thank you, Commissioner Mingo. Agenda Item 2, under Hearing and Action, DCP-ZDR-2021-05131. Agenda, and that would be for Duffield Street. Agenda Item 3, DCP-ZDR-2021-02959 at 4808 Baum Boulevard. And then Agenda Item D, which is Plan of Lots. Agenda Item E, Director's Report. Going back up to approval of minutes. We do have two sets of minutes for, that we are in receipt of. I will take the vote separately. Assuming that all Commissioners have reviewed minutes, forwarded any corrections for March 22nd, 2022. Do I have a motion to approve?
Don't move.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Askey.
Upstain.
Commissioner Blackwell.
I.
Commissioner Brown.
Approved.
Commissioner Burton Falk, I. Commissioner Dietrich.
Upstain.
Commissioner Dick.
I.
Commissioner Mingo.
I.
Commissioner O'Neill.
I.
Very good, motion passes. We're going to move to the second set of minutes for approval today that we are in receipt of, which is April 15. Assuming that you have read those and reviewed them and sent forward any corrections, do I have a motion to approve for April 5, 2022?
So moved.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Askey.
I.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Upstain.
Commissioner Brown.
Upstain.
Commissioner Burton Falk, I. Commissioner Dietrich.
I.
Commissioner Dick.
I.
Commissioner Mingo.
I.
Commissioner O'Neill.
I.
All right, motion passes on the minutes. Commissioners, we are moving to the next agenda item, which is correspondence. For April 19, 2022, we are in receipt of correspondence for three agenda items. Under Agenda Item DCP-ZDR-2021-05131-05218 and 05219 Duffield Street. We have correspondence from Beth, Mary Beth Tedesso, David and Lois Melhorn, Robert A. Haney, David Hairhugger, Gabriel Smith and Andrea Wolf, Yovanna Bontrager and Andre Schenk, Logan and Orin Wright, Matthew L. Dearson, AIA Secretary for Morningside Area Community Council, and Catherine Canfield. Under Agenda Item DCP-ZDR-2021-05875, Re. 5941 Penn Avenue. We have correspondence from Caitlin Green, Board Chair, and Joseph Hall, Executive Director of the Kelly Strayhorn Theater. We have correspondence from Joseph Hall, Executive Director of Kelly Strayhorn Theater separately, James McNeil, City Theater Company, and Melissa McSwigan. Under Agenda Item DCP-ZDR-2021-02959, Re. 4808 Baum Boulevard. We have correspondence from Sam Spearing for Bloomfield Development Corporation. Okay, moving on from correspondence, we are going to move forward with the agenda. And we will start, given Agenda Item Number 1, again, has been continued to May 3rd. We will move to Agenda Item to DCP-CDR-2021-05131, DCP-ZDR-2021-05218, and DCP-ZDR-2021-05219, presenting, that will be Ms. Kramer on Duffield Street.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Anne Kramer, and I would like to do a very quick check with my applicants. I see Ben Walls and Mike Jam-Petro here. Can you both just chime in, make sure we can hear you? And in the meanwhile, I'm looking for John Edward Porter in our attendees list, and as soon as I find him, we will promote him as well.
Hi, this is Ben Walls.
Thanks, Ben, we can hear you. Okay.
And this is Mike Jam-Petro.
Thanks, Mike, we can hear you well too, thank you. All right. Ah, I think I found, I think I found John. John, are you here with us? I think he's unmuting himself. In the meanwhile, I will give my presentation, my brief overview of our presentation, and then we'll hand it over to our applicants to begin. This, as Commissioner Burton Falk said, this is case DCP-ZDR-2021-05. My word, is that? Let me just double check, that's not me. All right, let me start again, thank you. This is cases DCP-ZDR-2021-05131-05218 and -05219. And they are filed by Desmond Architects, on behalf of the owners, for development and site improvements, new construction of six attached, single-family homes with associated site work in the R2, that's a low-density, and in the parks districts, also in steep slopes overlay. There is no registered community organization in this area, however, a virtual meeting was held on October 20, or October 18th, pardon me, 2021, with the applicant, neighborhood stakeholders, and the staff to discuss the project prior to zoning board of adjustment. Now, the project went to zoning board of adjustment as case 164 of 2021 on February of 2022, and the board approved dimensional variances for the front and side setbacks for the primary and accessory structures and uses. The board approved dimensional variances to the retaining wall height with landscape conditions that will be verified by staff on the final review of the landscape plan. And the board approved dimensional variances to the lot size with the condition that each of the lots is to be developed for a single-family residential unit, and that the height of the structures must comply with the site development standards for the R2L, that's the low-density district. And the staff will verify this on the final review of the zoning development review materials. The landscape plan, including the plan for tree replacement, slope stabilization, and revegetation, was reviewed by staff and found to be adequate. The additional review for compliance with the ZBA conditions will be completed with the final review of the landscape plan. The geotechnical report is required for work within the steep slopes overlay, and staff reviewed the submitted geotechnical, geotechnical report and found it administratively sufficient. The proposed development was reviewed by the design staff, and then by the contextual design advisory panel, that is, CDAP. On October 5th, 2021, the panel found that the modern design intent responded well to the site's topographical constraints and suggested incorporating more green space and reducing the impervious surfaces to the site design, and adding features to the design facade that would differentiate the units. The design review summary is attached to your staff report. The stormwater management plan was reviewed by staff and found to be sufficient. The Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, that's DOMI, is reviewing the development for the curb cut locations. Notices for this Planning Commission hearing was mailed to a budding property owners with 21 days in advance of today's date, and was posted with placards onsite under Section 906.08.5.c.5, pardon me. The Planning Commission is reviewing this case for the work in the steep slopes overlay, and the applicant submitted responses to the review criteria for steep slopes overlay, and they are attached to your planning, I'm sorry, to your staff report. So, staff recommends approval of this case with one of our typical conditions, that the final construction plans, including site plans, landscapes, and elevations, be reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator prior to issuing the final record of zoning approval. And with that, I'm going to turn our attention over to our applicants. Hey, John, are you able to chime in and make sure that your, your mic is working for us now?
Yeah, I'm here, can you guys hear me okay?
Thank you, yes, we can.
So, this is the Duffield Street duplexes that Anne had introduced. If you go to the next slide, please. So as you can see, we're situated between the Sand Heights and Morningside Community. Next slide. And then, our site is in the middle right here, on Duffield Street. It's a cross-section street of Bryant Street and Morningside, or in Calmazew Way. Next slide. So just looking at the site itself, the top left photo looks down to the right of the property. Top right looks down to the left, and then bottom left looks to the left of the site as well, and then just a little bit further down on the sidewalk itself. Next slide, please. So as Anne mentioned, we were approved for the three variances that we requested for the minimal lot size. The front yard setback from 30 feet down to 20 feet. Minimum interior lot, side yard setback was reduced from five to zero for the primary structure, and two and a half feet down for the accessory structure, or accessory parking. We also had the variance approved for the retaining wall in the rear. Next slide, please. So just kind of go over the four plans we have here. We have a one-car interco garage with a flex room in the back, and then main floor living space with kitchen, living room, dining room, and then three bedrooms on the top floor. Next slide. So here are the proposed elevations that we would have. It's a mixture of brick and fiber cement siding. The front is on the left side, and side elevation on the right. Next slide, please. So the rear elevation is on the left-hand side, side elevation is on the right. Same thing, be a mixture of brick and siding as well. Next slide. So you can see here the context of how it would look on the street. This is a mashed-together image of it. It's not a direct shot. So everything would be three stories and less than 40 feet. Next slide. So here are those proposed materials that we have. Like I said, it'd be brick. It'd be a combination of colors for the fiber cement panels, and then also for the fiber cement siding. And then to offer some variance between the units, each of the door colors will be painted a different color. For example, we have red and blue shown here, but there would probably be a combination of six colors. Next slide. So here are the proposed renders for, for the property itself. We would just have the minimum amount of light that's needed, and then we also have all the landscape requirements that would help screen the entryways and the houses themselves. Next slide, please. Just another view, looking down the street of the, of the property itself. Next slide. And then, this is farther down Duffield Street. You can see the context of the other homes in the area, and the new houses on the right. Next slide. So the construction management plan was approved. This is the proposed plan. There'd be your new parking area out in front of the lot. And then you would have a staging on the right, a delivery area in the middle, and then your proposed dumpster area on the left-hand side. And right now, that street itself is only 20 feet wide, I believe. So any one car parking is, you know, able to be parked there at any given point anyway, so this would be for the protection of people that just are driving by. Just so they don't, you know, have any damage to their car. Next slide. Accessible design was mentioned, and we did talk about it as a design team, but with the natural grade of the site, it's kind of impossible to do accessible design into the units themselves, just because we're at 15% slope. And to meet ADA, we have to hit 2%. And then it's also cost prohibitive to do an elevator in the units, especially if you can't get to the units themselves, so. That was considered, but it's not something that's really an option for this unit. Next slide. And as Anne mentioned, we did meet with the city, or with the neighbors, a couple times, and they also spoke at the zone variance hearing as well. Next slide. And we have been approved for the ENS plan and stormwater management plan by the Conservation Initiative and by the City of Pittsburgh. And Ben can go in more detail about that as we get to the next slides. Can you go to the next slide, please? Ben, do you want to talk about this, please?
Sure, yep, this is the existing conditions plan, which is a result of our survey. It's all existing utilities, adjacent homes, grade, vegetation on the site, and vegetation that, that needed to be removed to construct the proposed design. Next slide, please. This is the new site plan, and some of the key elements that we want to point out is that natural landforms will be maintained to the maximum extent possible. And we did this through terrace retaining walls by allowing the building to step with the landscape, meaning in the back, we're at one level, and then it drops down around the building to a, to the garage level in the front. And on, at the edges, to the greatest extent possible, we, you know, we didn't change the grade at all at those edges. We, we just tied into existing in those locations at the, at the extents of the property. And geotechnical report, you know, was completed, and we followed all recommendations. The proposed development shall employ foundations that include ground contour embankments, vegetation, or other such measures. Same kind of items that, you know, we stepped, we stepped with the site, with, with the wall, and then with the buildings. And we provided steep slope plantings above and adjacent to the walls, and then shrubs, plantings around the buildings, and street trees along Duffield Street. We, we looked at the, that the development shall be setback 50 feet in both directions from the edge of a steep slope overlay boundary when it occurs at either a ridge or a baseline. And, and our, our development matches, if you look left and right, it, you know, we match other setbacks on the street. Next slide, please. We, we completed a steep slope analysis where we looked at the existing conditions and, and reviewed slopes, and then the proposed conditions and reviewed slopes. And what this shows is that, you know, the, the red area on the left in the existing condition, for, for the most part, matches the red area on the right. You know, the yellow areas and, and so on, so it, it again, just helps depict that we, that we, you know, we, we adjusted the grade as needed to construct what we're proposing, but we, you know, tried not to go beyond what was needed. Next slide, please. This is the post-construction stormwater management plan. And natural drainage patterns were maintained to the extent physically possible. The site was only graded where it was needed to develop the site, and stormwater conveyance treatment and revegetation was used to mimic the existing conditions to the greatest extent possible. Stormwater runoff from impervious surfaces shall be collected and transported from the site rather than directed or allowed to flow into adjacent properties or rights ways. The stormwater is collected and treated onsite, within, within, within stormwater infiltration chamber systems, and then, and then outletted to the, to the front, to the storm sewer. Next slide, please. Utilities on the site, all utilities. Utilities on the site, all utilities are making connections. To to Duffield Street in the front like other homes do on on the street. Next slide, please. This is the the landscape plan. The proposed development, again, minimizes impervious surfaces. And we we provided steep slope plantings adjacent to the retaining walls, shrubs, plantings and lawns around the buildings. Street trees along Duffield Street. And there was replacement trees required for the. The trees greater than twelve inches in diameter rest height that were removed. And those are going to be provided at an off-site location. We we looked at the onsite, but then working with the city forester, it just. There wasn't space to do, you know, what was required onsite for those replacement trees. Vegetation removal solely to create uses prohibited. The vegetation that we, you know, we the vegetation that was removed was to accomplish the grading of the site and it's it's, you know. Additional vegetation was, you know, not removed where it wasn't needed. Proposed structure shall minimize the need for vegetation removal with the exception of invasive species. You can explain that. Vegetation with similar appearance and growing requirements as existing proximate vegetation or native species shall be employed. The site is being vegetated to the greatest extent possible and the landscape plan was reviewed and revised based upon city forest requirements. Next slide, please. This is the subdivision plan and. This will create six single family. Homes or six, six individual properties. You know, won't be owned all as one property, but individual and, you know, we've submitted that through the the city's system. Next slide, please. Mike, do you want to take over here? Mike, are you muted?
Sorry about that. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, this this drawing right here just shows a an overhead view of the two retaining terrace retaining walls. Located in the back of the units. At the top of the drawing is the upper wall. And the one just down from it is is the lower one. And the wall on the left side is the crib wall that extends off the rear corner of the. Unit on the left and ties the two retaining walls together at the left side. Next slide, please. Okay, this is the upper wall profile, which just shows the. Is basically the changes in the wall height from from left to right on the previous drawing. Pretty much the wall just it steps down as you go along the right side of the back property. And as a whole, it on average, it varies between, pretty much between twelve courses and and six courses. So the wall along the backside, the upper wall never is above ten feet in height. And next slide, please. And this is pretty much the same thing, but just showing the lower. Wall of the terrace, again, going from left to right. From the overhead view drawing a couple drawings ago. And just showing the changes in the grade along the wall. Again, it goes from higher to lower, from left to right along the property. And also shows the grid that's going to be placed in between each block that. Basically helps resist the overturning forces for the entire wall system. And next slide. And this is a section view just showing the wall, the upper and the lower wall system, how they act together. Basically, it's showing the the grid for both the lower and the upper wall as well as the foundation and. All the blocks and the benching that is going to go behind the wall along the rear of the property. Now, next slide, please. And this drawing here is a is a cut section view of the crib wall, which is begins at the left corner. Of the or the rear left corner of the back or the left unit. And this wall goes from that corner and extends. Outward towards the rear of the property to tie in the two, the upper and the lower retaining walls. And this is basically a gravity wall. So there's no geo grid reinforcement here. Therefore, the excavation does not have to be as wide. So this system just uses the weight of the wall and the stone placed above the cribbing. On the lower part of the drawing to resist the whole, the overturning forces. Same blocks, but just a different system. Gravity walls opposed to a wall with geo grid reinforcement. And next slide, please. And that that concludes the the retaining wall section of the presentation.
That concludes the presentation altogether or just the, okay, very good. That answers that question. Thank you so much for the presentation. Just a reminder that under hearing in action, first we hear the presentation. Then we open for public testimony. Commission will then deliberate and take action. So at this time, we will take public testimony. If there is anyone that would like to speak, please raise your hand. If you are on the phone only, press star nine to raise your hand. If you're going to speak state and then spell your first and last name, identify where you live and any organization that you represent. With three minutes to share. Is there anyone with a raised hand?
Michael Lane, you can unmute yourself and please state your name and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Michael Lane. First name is spelled M I C H A E L. Last name is spelled L A I N. I'm a resident of Duffield Street at eleven sixty four. Down on this same block as the proposed construction. I'd like to register my opposition to this construction. There for under three, well, maybe four, four different. Things here. First of all, I I don't believe that this section of Duffield Street can support. Six units is quite, it adds to the density of this of this street quite a lot. You know, most of these houses were were built in the twenties and thirties along here. And it was, you know, they were designed at that at that time as all single family units. Adding six more units onto the street would 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 be was going to cause a. A problem as far as 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 far as far as traffic is concerned, as far as noise. And I I simply do not think that this that this street can can support six more units. The construction itself is going to cause a lot of trouble for people here that live on this street as far as the noise, as far as the smell. As far as as everything else goes that comes with construction, including of the block of the street. I don't believe that the that the 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 views that you have seen by the. That you've just seen actually represent the street very well. There's parking on one side. And there's basically barely room for a large vehicle to get by on the street as it is. Construction vehicles will make that completely impossible. And and that's not even to to say, once the, once they're built, traffic is going to be a problem. Because one thing that you did not see on that presentation was that there is a a slope. There's a rise in the street exactly where these units are going to be. As it is, it's impossible to for people coming either way to see each other. Duffield is a two-way street and adding six units right at the at that rise. At the in the street was going to cause a lot of trouble and may cause actual accidents. Finally, I'd like to say that the design of this of these of these units, while I I do, I'm sympathetic. I understand that when you build a new unit, it's going to look new and people who want to buy a new unit are going to want to see that. However, it does not fit in with the rest of this neighborhood. As I said, almost every other house on this block was built in the twenties and thirties. And it it is simply going to look bizarre compared to the rest of the units on this. On this in this on the street and frankly, in the entire neighborhood. So I I'd like to thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you. We appreciate the testimony. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Yes, hello. My name is Gerard Pompah, G E R A R D P O M P A. I own eleven forty two, almost directly across the street. I echo some of Michael's concerns. They're beautiful design. I'm not sure it can accommodate. I'm I'm very sure that we cannot accommodate that many units and that many new. Vehicles in that area. There is parking, off-street parking provided in the plan, which is absolutely necessary. But as was explained earlier. There's a tight bend, which actually is is sort of a single, single pass bend now, right? So I don't know if the street will be widened, but really the only way to make that bend going. From the Brian Street side over to the Morning Side, Evan's side on Duffield is to stop. It's a blind spot. There's a grade, but also a sharp bend to be able to see. So I just with six additional. Units and that much more traffic when there are visitors or multifamily or multi-car families. I just don't see how it will accommodate parking, increased traffic, the blind spots. There's a lot of elderly people on the street. It's very, it's going to be a safety problem from a tight quarters point of view. Also, when these when these resident, new residents will back out of their driveway. You know, there's there's very little room. So I don't know if those driveways will accommodate that turning radius. Going from the street into driveway and back out again, there will be increased back incidences of accidents. There's no question. And there's children live across the street literally. So it's it's a concern. And a couple of additional, I don't know, you can answer questions, but do you have a timeframe for construction? And and when these will be available and is there a price range? Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else that wants just to speak?
No other hands are raised.
Okay, great. Thank you. So commissioners, at this time, do we have any questions, comments? Or concerns to add here? Commissioner O'Neil.
Before we get into comments from commissioners, I was wondering if staff could just confirm. The variances that were granted by ZBIA. I know they're in our report, but if we could just reiterate what those were and then. The commission's scope of review here.
Certainly, certainly. Let me go back to my notes here. This the zoning board of adjustment approved dimensional variances for the fronts and side setbacks. For the primary and the accessory uses and structures. So that would be, pardon me, for the. For the homes and for the the steps and for the. The parking and all those things that are in the front and side setbacks that you see in the plan. They also approved dimensional variances for the wall height. The wall will be in places taller than ten feet. Which is the limit according to the zoning code. And then it also approved dimensional variances for the lot size. The lot sizes are going to are proposed to be under the lot sizes for the R two L. And the second part you were asking Commissioner O'Neil is for. The review criteria for the steep slopes overlay?
Confirm that we're we're only looking at this application in terms of this deep slope overlay. This isn't. Full project development plan review.
The the zoning code does say that the planning commission shall review the work within the steep slopes overlay. And then provides the criteria by which the planning commission can review and approve it.
Sorry, just to to sorry to jump in to make sure that I'm answering Commissioner O'Neil's question directly. The the development plan is reviewed by the zoning administrator. For the right, and so the steep slope overlay is very is is narrowly related to the. Steep slope overlay criteria, but it is a it is a threshold for the development to pass through. As part of its review process.
Thank you. I guess as a follow-up to that, after we review this today and as part of the steep slope. Before anything is built or construction starts. The Department of Permits and License and Inspections would also be reviewing any sort of geotechnical report. To make sure that the slope is stable. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So so just to reiterate for some of the the members of the public, thank you for your testimony. We we do have some limits on our review today. Specifically lot size, number of units that has already been approved by the zoning board. Certainly, we we want to take your other comments into consideration, but we we can't really adjust the the density today. That's not within our purview. And then I guess I just have a few questions for the developer. This is a tight area of Duffield. I've driven it myself quite often. You know, was there an opportunity for the the road to be widened? And how did you address community concerns related to that?
Yeah, in terms of the the road being widened, you know, it's a brick road itself. We did talk about it in one of the initial meetings with the city. I believe that was one of the means with Corey, if I remember correctly. But there was nothing that could be done. If you look at the the site plan itself, there's a bunch of utilities that are in the sidewalk. That surround Duffield Street. So all that would have to be removed and and moved back into the the parcel itself. So it's not really a feasible option.
And then as far as parking on the same side of Duffield Street during the development. I'm sorry, during construction, you have a proposed no parking zone on that side of Duffield Street. Does that mean that construction vehicles will also not be parked there? No one will be parking there?
Yeah, so construction vehicles will be parked in the lot itself. I don't know if you can go back to that slide or not, but we just have that protection area as an area. Where, you know, everyday person will not park there, but construction vehicles will be pulled off the road in the lay down area itself. I believe it's slide twenty, maybe?
It's PDF slide fourteen.
Fourteen, okay. I knew it was about halfway there. Yeah, so where where the sidewalk is 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 at now. You know, there is no sidewalk on the site itself, so construction vehicles will pull off the road and they would not block the road itself. And you know, the contractor would make sure that that wouldn't be an issue. The red dash area, honestly, is just to protect people people's vehicles themselves. So that they're not, you know, getting hit by debris or whatever else if they're throwing wood into the dumpsters and so forth.
And after this is complete, would parking be permitted on that side of the street or would it be prohibited?
No, that that street itself is not wide enough to have parking on both sides of the street. As you move down towards the left and towards the right, it does get wider to twenty four feet and people do park on both sides and you can. Pass one vehicle between there, but even now you can't park two sides on both sides of the.
So there there would be signage that would be clear that people could not park there.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, it's just it's just naturally not wide enough to do that unless you were to pull the cars off on the curb, which yes, people do in other areas. Of town and cities and so forth, but it's not ideal in development, so. Which is ultimately too, one of the reasons why we have two cars of parking for the houses themselves, so that. You know, we're not creating eight more parking spots that need to be used on the street itself.
And those those driveways for the second, the second space per each unit, they're long enough that a car would not. Have to extend into the sidewalk.
Correct, yeah. We did look at that and brought that up to us in one of the zoning reviews and we have a dash line depicting how wide that car would be. On the driveway itself and. The the car itself would actually go to like the property line. And if you look at the property line. The, the car itself would actually go to like the property line, and if you look at the property line toward the sidewalk, there's an additional. I believe it's around five to seven feet depending on which driveway you're looking at, so. It wouldn't be overhanging into the sidewalk at all, so pedestrians would be clearly, or would be able to clearly pass from sidewalk to sidewalk.
John, those are shown in that light blue color on the slide that's up right now. The, the vehicle is, the vehicle line.
Okay, can you guys zoom in by any chance? I don't know. I don't have access to that. If you look at that left hand, you can see those blue marks that he's talking about.
Okay, so that's as far as a car would extend approximately. And then I guess as a follow-up, in addition to the two community members who testified today, we, we received several letters. Can you talk to us about any continued engagement with them? You know, this is a, a small community, they're very, you know, the roads narrow, they're very tight. And, you know, we need, we need our developers to be working with them. Have you continued communications?
I can't speak to what the, the developer himself has spoken to them, but I can say that, you know. Every, every attempt that, you know, they'll, they do during construction, you know, they'll try to make sure everybody, you know, gets the job done and. Make sure everything is clean so that it's a clean job site and, you know, not be a hassle or an issue. I know that was one of the, the comments from the neighbors, but. You know, try to make it towards the least amount of impact as possible for their daily lives for, you know, the duration of construction and stuff.
Yeah, we, we highly encourage that. Some of the letters mentioned, not only is there parking across the street, but includes ADA accessible or handicap parking. Which is important to the residents who live there. So as much as new construction may always have some disruption, we really want to minimize it here. And we highly, highly encourage you to keep communications open with the community. I don't have any further comments.
Echoing Commissioner O'Neill, communication is critical. Commissioners, any other comments or questions here? Okay, seeing none at this time, our recommended motion. In our reports is for approval with a condition of final construction plans, including site plans. Landscape plans and elevations to be reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator prior to issuing the final. Record of zoning approval. Do I have a motion from the floor?
So moved. Commissioner Blackwell.
Thank you, Commissioner Blackwell. Do I have a second?
Second, Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. I will go through Commissioner Asti.
Hi.
Okay, Commissioner Blackwell. Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk.
Aye.
Commissioner Dietrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick.
No.
Okay, Commissioner. O'Neill.
Dane.
Okay, so the motion carries. Thank you very much. It's been passed and we will move on to the next agenda item. For today. Thank you for the presentation and thank you, community, for coming out.
And I will be closing on the next item.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. For agenda item number three, we have DCP-ZDR. Dash twenty twenty-one dash zero two nine five nine. Regarding forty-eight oh eight Baum Boulevard, that is the demolition and new construction. Of automatic car wash Bloomfield neighborhood. Presenting that today is Mr. Kinnick.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I will pause while we let our applicants into the. Into the room. Hey, Ryan, when you're ready, can you do a sound check, please?
The time is three fourteen PM.
Kevin, this is John Kamen. You can hear me?
I can. I believe we may have, let me, okay. Yep, we can hear you, John, thanks.
Great. I know Ryan was going to prevent and present, and we have Steve Todorovic as well.
They should all be able to unmute if they would like to do a sound check real quick?
Uh, this is Steve.
Excellent, we can hear you.
Okay, this is, this is Ryan Indovina. Sorry, it was not allowing my shift over to the panelist. Apology.
Oh, I'm sorry. We can hear you.
Great.
Right, good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Kevin Kuna with the Department of City Planning. This is an application for project development plan number DCP-ZDR twenty twenty-one. Zero two nine five nine filed for demolition and new construction of a one-story structure for use as car wash. With accessory surface and vacuum parking. Application includes demolition of an existing two-and-a-half-story structure. And new construction of a one-story approximately twenty-four hundred gross square foot car wash. With four accessory surface parking spaces and four vacuum station spaces. This application is in the UNC zoning district and includes overlays for the Baum Center corridor overlay district. Car wash is an administrator exception in the UNC zoning district. The application appeared before the ZBA as case one thirteen of twenty twenty-one, requesting a special exception for the drive-through use. In the UNC zoning district. The request was approved with conditions. Conditions include approval of the administrator's exception. Domi's issuance of a curb cut permit, provision of safety and accessibility measures as presented at the ZBA hearing. Require, requirement of a right turn only exit on the Baum Boulevard. And landscaping and screening consistent with plans presented at the ZBA hearing. The ZBA decision is attached to your hearing and action report. A development activity, excuse me, a development activities meeting was held with the Bloomfield Development Corporation. The registered community organization for this address on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. The DAM report is also attached to your hearing and action report. The stormwater management plan was approved on January fourth, twenty twenty-two. Domi review including curb, curb cut and Domi site plan review has been submitted and is under review by the Department of. Mobility and Infrastructure. This proposed project was reviewed by the staff designer view on January tenth, twenty twenty-two. The design review report is attached. The applicant statement of clients per the planning commission review criteria is also attached. The recommended motion is that the planning commission approves project development plan DCP-ZDR twenty twenty-one. Oh two nine five nine with the following conditions. That final construction documents, including site plans, landscape plan and elevation shall be reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator. Prior to issuing the final record of zoning approval. And that Domi shall review the final plans and issue the necessary Domi approvals prior to issuing the Rosa. And with that, I will turn it over to the applicants.
Thank you very much, Ryan Indovina, Indovina's Architects. Okay, so we are here this afternoon to present the proposed car wash development on Baum Boulevard. That is at the intersection of Millvale and Baum Boulevard, basically one parcel inward. That's identified with the red area. On the site plan here with Baum Boulevard being the primary east-west thoroughfare and then Millvale going north and south. Next slide, please. So the project's located in the UNC Urban Neighborhood Commercial District. The fire, four primary points of that district are that the project serve a broader market. That it would allow range of development while controlling impacts on neighborhood adjacent to them, ensure that development fits within the existing development patterns. And then reinforce qualities and built environment in terms of the site development standards. Residential compatibility is not applicable. New development shall be allowed to use contextual setbacks, excuse me, contextual setbacks, contextual building heights. In this case, the building is a single-story structure well in board of various setback conditions, so our minimum lot size is not a factor. F A R being single story is not a factor. Lot coverage similarly not a factor. There's no front setback. Rear setbacks twenty feet, which we abide by, and then there are no exterior interior side yard setbacks. And again, the height is not in consideration here of being a single-story structure. As Kevin mentioned, the car wash is an administrative exception within the UNC district. And we pursued a special exception through zoning board adjustment for vehicular drive-through use in the UNC district. Next slide, please. Just a quick slide indicating location of the parcel within the zoning map, so the purpose, UNC district. It's immediately boarded by the UNC district and per residential compatibility standards were not within two hundred feet of a adjacent residential district. Either the RMH or the R two M, either north or south of the parcel. Next slide, please. From a timeline standpoint, the project began basically January of last year, twenty twenty-one. We did pre-application meeting in that same month. We had initial meeting with Baum Center Initiative BCI, February sixteenth of that time period. We submitted our zone development review application following that meeting in the middle of March. We had the development activities meeting, which was a joint meeting with Bloomfield Carrefour Corporation, sorry, Bloomfield Development. As well as Baum Center Initiative in May eighteenth of twenty twenty-one. And had the zoning board adjustment hearing June third, twenty twenty-one, with the approval coming mid-July after that. Next slide, please. So this is a three-dimensional aerial view of the project site. So as I mentioned, it's at the, roughly at the corner of Baum Boulevard and South Millville Avenue. Currently, the site is occupied by a converted single-family house that. Was converted, I think in the seventies or eighties into a restaurant that has gone through a number of iterations. And is currently vacant and has been vacant for a couple of years. So that is basically on the northwest corner of the site and the remainder of the site is currently surface parking. Within a two-story garage, remote garage structure at the rear, basically the southwest corner. In terms of its surrounding parcels, this is directly adjacent to the Trolley Restaurants on the corner of Baum and South Millvale. Which is also surf, surface parking wrapping around it. On the opposite side of Millvale was a drive-through PNC branch that's no longer functional. Directly across the street is a BMW dealership. Directly adjacent to the east is a mini dealership, followed by Einstein, Einstein Bagels. As well as the Getco. Gas station that is on the corner, one block up on Marwood and Baum Boulevard. Next slide, please. A couple of site views here, so in the upper left corner, this is a view looking on Baum Boulevard towards shady side direction. So on the left-hand side with a BMW dealership and the right-hand side, you see a sort of corner of the, of the existing site. With its directional signage, which is more clear on the upper right corner, so that is the converted structure with the restaurant at the ground level. Vehicular access on both sides of that structure, basically creating a loop condition. That is sort of partially shared with the Trolley Restaurant. On the lower left corner is a view from Millvale, looking across the rear of the restaurant parcel towards the rear of those parcel. With that residential structure and then finally a view in the lower right corner of Baum Boulevard, looking at Millvale at that intersection. Next slide, please. So from a pro's standpoint, we are reorienting, excuse me, reorienting the arrangement of the site. So currently, as, as was indicated in the previous slides, the building is located in upper left corner, we're basically shifting that downward. And up against the mini dealership side of the parcel, that permits a vehicular access, both ingress and egress. Twenty-four feet off of Baum Boulevard, so vehicles would pull, make a right turn off Baum Boulevard into the site. They would extend the entire length of the site to the lower left corner, at which point there would be the ticketing station. There's two lanes for that to occur. And then we would have people take tickets and then would combine into a single lane that then accesses the single, single aisle. Internal automated car wash structure that would then allow them to progress out of that at the northeast corner of the site. Underneath a structural canopy and screen element, which you'll see in the renderings a little bit later. It would then circulate back over towards the egress point and as Kevin mentioned. The, there would be a right stop sign as well as a right turn only signage at that egress point. That forces people to make a right turn only onto Baum Boulevard. That was something mentioned in the DM meeting as well as pre, pre-meetings with BCI and Bloomfield. To ensure that there's not negative impacts on traffic flow in Baum Boulevard, particularly as people crossing the two lanes of eastbound traffic. A couple of items to, I guess additionally mention, in the northeast corner of the site, we've created a sort of rain garden condition. That would be well-planted with nat, natural plants, or, sorry, indigenous plants, excuse me. In that space to create a nice, nice landscape buffer, that's in similar configuration to the Trolley Restaurants on the west side of the, of the site here. Which has the building setbacks likely to allow for a landscape buffer between the sidewalk and the face of the building. We were also providing a onsite parking. So as was mentioned, there'll be three vacuum stations and additional single, single vehicle parking. That would run perpendicular to the length of the, of the vehicle car wash. That would also include a ADA compliant stall as well as van accessible access aisle. At the, at the end of that parking area. There would also be onsite bike parking provided, which is what you see the dashed rectangles directly below the ADA stall. And then the remainder of the functional building itself beyond the linear tunnel for the actual car wash is an internal office space. Providing onsite staff for operations of the car wash as well as the mechanical space from that point upward. Next slide, please. From a pedestrian access point, the red arrows here indicate the access from the sidewalk on Baum Boulevard. Yeah, a surface sidewalk that would then be delineated with articulated ground cover on the actual asphalt paving. To allow pedestrians to cross the, the exit aisle from the car wash and then access the common sidewalk that exists between the parking and the face of the building. That would allow for full, full control and full pathway through the whole site. And as I mentioned in the previous slide, the ADA parking stall would provide the, the adjacent accessible, van accessible space. To allow direct access onto that site. This is not a, excuse me, a publicly accessible structure, however, so there's really. There would be no, let's say, need for the public to actually enter the building. However, it's envisioned that people would certainly be able to utilize the, the vacuum stations and various parking spaces. For car-related activities, you know, cleaning cars, vacuuming cars, checking air pressure, those kind of things. That would occur on, on a site and a use such as this. Next slide, please. From a, the architectural design standpoint, it is car wash, so there's not a lot of penetrations. Necessary or needed for its primary use, so in the architectural manner. We've looked at articulating the building with a number of materials as well as patterning. And then additional structures to align both architecturally with, with the building's functional use, but also with the desire for the UNC. Zoning district to create a nice continuation of the structural mass of the building. So in the upper, upper view here, it's an elevation of the east side of the building. This will be pretty much concealed by the direct, directly adjacent mini dealership. However, we are providing a grid of, of a aluminum plate panel. Basically rain screen panel that's direct applied to the masonry substructure of the building. So that would be the cladding on the, the car wash, let's say, volume itself. And then as I mentioned, as people exit out of the car wash towards Baum Boulevard, we're providing a structural steel frame. Trellis assembly with a canopy as well as horizontal louvers. That would extend on the entire length of that structural steel structure and then wrap the corner to create. Yeah, a, a volume and a mass structure that, that both conceals the egress point from the car wash, but also extends the actual architecture of the building. To be in line with the adjacent, adjacent buildings. In the lower view here, you have a view of basically the public side of the building. With the larger portion of the, the car wash itself articulated with the metal panels. The smaller portion with the office and the mechanical space would be a smooth, basically polished masonry veneer. So that'd be sort of a, let's say, a terrazzo kind of looking material in contrast to the more shiny anodized aluminum panels. Be providing a horizontal canopy. Be providing a horizontal canopy on this area, which is what you see in that sort of horizontal line there. To provide weather protection for people utilizing the vacuum station access walkway. And then we also have an indication of the green roof assembly that would be provided on the lower portion of the roof of the main building. In which case we're utilizing that both for decorative elements as well as for mitigation of stormwater in addition to the below-grade stormwater servicing the project. Next slide, please. So these are two views of the building, basically on the north face of the building. The one on the left-hand side is view of the building as it stands without the screen element. So you're seeing the garage door, the aluminum panels, the canopy above that aluminum above the garage door as well as canopy above the van door and walkway element. And then as we step back, essentially looking at the building holistically on the right-hand side. You see the articulated screen wall, which is basically extending for the length of the egress drive aisle coming out of the car wash. And that is comprised of a three-and-a-half-foot wall, a concrete wall within the structural steel frame, both vertical and horizontal, that's clad in horizontal louvers. And that is intended to align directly with the UNC zoning district's intent to have an articulated open facade along the public corridor of the building. So in this case, you know, instead of a storefront opening, we're creating a framework of steel and louvers to extend the architecture, but also provide that transparency that's desired in the zoning district. Next slide, please. So shifting over to the, to the site civil side of things and I'll allow some, I think, Bob Smith and Tyson Miller from KU Resources are on the call, but I'll kind of jump through here and they'll speak to a couple of slides later. This is just the indication of existing site to be demolished. So everything in red would be removed, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation. Existing two-and-a-half-story structure would be removed as well as the two-story garage at the lower-left corner of the site. As well as the surface parking that occupies the remainder of the parcel. Next slide, please. This is the, the site plan. So per our briefing discussion, there was concern relative to the traffic generation of the project. I, the number of cars would be onsite. So the intention of this updated slide is to indicate the number of cars that are within the queue condition. Which is measured from the entrance point to the car wash itself out to the egress point. So in this case, we're able to accommodate 14 cars onsite in our double-loaded queue space without impacting egress capacity from the structure. Through the city of Pittsburgh zoning code, a car wash, an automatic car wash is required to have four queuing spaces minimum. So we're in excess by 10. Each one of those queuing spaces is a 10 by 20 dimension. Which is a little bit larger than a typical city Pittsburgh parking stall, which is eight-and-a-half by 18. So certainly giving a little bit of flexibility and gap space between those cars as they access the car wash itself. So again, providing a great deal of onsite capacity for the vehicular use of the parcel. Next slide, please. This is the stormwater management. I think this is the stormwater management slide. And just basically showing the conditions as proposed as part of the stormwater management plan. So as I mentioned, there's a green roof element that is sitting on top of the mechanical side of the building. And there would also be a underground retention and retention system that would accommodate the remainder of the acquired stormwater management onsite. And as Kevin mentioned, this has been reviewed and approved by the city of Pittsburgh. Next slide, please. In terms of landscaping plan, the site is basically utilizing every element that is not part of vehicular access for landscaping. So as I mentioned before, the space between the vehicular egress aisle and the sidewalk will be landscaped with significant trees and lower landscaping. The buffer zone between the vehicular access driveway and the adjacent parcel to the west would also be landscaped for its entirety, as well as the southern portion of the site would be landscaped between it and the essentially parking lot of the strip mall that is, that's to the direct south. And then the zones that are between curb cuts, parking areas would similarly be landscaped with with topsoil and lawn seating. Next slide, please. I think this is redundant to the one I just mentioned before, but essentially it's a more cleaned-up version of the stormwater management plan indicating the locations of catch basins, the underground directionality of the storm sewer. And then the green roof extent. Next slide, please. So I think, I think we have the folks from KU Resources on the call here. Who, I think you guys let them in, if not. Yeah, I see Bob Smith. So Bob, if you can take over and just basically clarify the transportation memorandum that was sent for review, that would be helpful.
Sure, can you guys hear me?
It's echoing quite a bit.
Sorry about that, I have the phone on. Can you hear me now?
Much better, thank you.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm on and I'm not muted.
Yeah, so we can hear you. Can you hear us?
This doesn't sound like he can hear us.
Can you hear me? I guess you can't hear me.
We can hear you.
Ryan, do you just want to walk through the KU report?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you, go ahead.
Oh, it seems he's not necessarily able to hear us. So I will attempt to describe what's included here. So, you know, forgive me for my lack of direct knowledge of transportation systems here. But essentially, a analysis was done.
Hello, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear you, Mr. Smith? Are you able to proceed? Maybe go ahead and finish, Ryan. It doesn't look like it's.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Apologies for this, maybe if Steve Todorovic is able to let him know that we're not able to hear. Or not, that there's some issue, then that would be helpful.
I tried texting him a couple of times.
Okay, well, so basically the transportation memo that was provided April 6th and then has been since amended.
Can you hear me?
It's been amended to city Pittsburgh DOMI staff, particularly Katie Reed in regards to the particular manual. So this transportation memorandum that I submitted as part of this application was referencing the ninth edition. We've since updated that to be the 11th edition and that was sent to DOMI, I believe, today. But has no demonstrative impact to the, essentially the overall transportation memorandum. I guess holistically, that's under review by DOMI in terms of understanding the impact of the project on the, on traffic generation. You know, again, I'm not the, let's say, expert on this. But holistically, it was breaking down into the parking capacity, vehicle circulation in terms of the length of the onsite pathway, the vehicular access throughout the site, as I indicated on the, on the lower, in the previous portion of the project. We're also indicating the vehicle queuing, which I mentioned previously, it was 14 units, 14 vehicles onsite. We also indicated trash collection, which is onsite via a three-and-a-half, three-foot by six-foot dumpster.
But I can't hear you, so I'm trying to figure out how. I know my computer speaker's on 70, which should be enough. I'm looking to find out where the setting is for.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith.
And I can't hear anyone else.
Mr. Smith, we can hear you.
I think he's not able to hear us.
Yeah, he's not able to hear us. So maybe it would be good to just mute him.
We're, we're working on that. You have to have a certain permission to do that. So we will try to, or it looks like he's at least muted right now.
Yes.
So apologies for that, certainly, but did not intend that to be the case. And potentially Steve can break in as we go to the, I believe, the next two slides in terms of the analysis of both existing car washes that are equivalent in use. So in this space, this is an analysis of basically unit measure, number of trips per unit in terms of the square footage of the actual car wash itself. And then I believe this is from, from the IT Common Trip Generation booklet, a manual indicating the number of trips as relative to the number of square feet for a peak PM hour. So essentially, the proposed car wash, which was 2,300 square feet gross, but not necessarily the drive aisle itself. The peak PM hour that was indicated, that was indicated in the analysis was 33, 33 vehicles. And then there was also done, included with this transportation memorandum, an analysis of the south side laser, south side laser wash, which is located in the south side area and so operated by the same owner. The observed peak alley number of trips during the noon to 1:00 PM period was 20 trips. And I think also indicated here was the pass-by trip generation reduction of 60%. Given proposed car wash buildings less than 20,000 square feet. So basically ended up being that the result of PMP, PMP trip rate is 20 trips per hour. For basically the entirety of the, of the operation of the car wash. Yeah, if you want to go to the next slide, please. Okay, so Steve, I'm not sure if you can jump in here and just speak to the analysis that was done here on the sheet.
Yeah, so we, I pulled these, this information from January of 2020. Which ended up being the busiest month of that year and then broke down the daily number of washes. And then within the daily number of washes, I took the busiest day of the, of the month with, which I believe was the 24th. And included an hourly report.
Yeah, so the intention of this, this slide is basically indicate a similarly scaled and arranged project elsewhere in the city to indicate the number of washes that occurred within the entirety of the day. In conjunction with the queuing spaces that are provided onsite. So as an indication on the right-hand column there, that's taking the worst-case scenario, i.e. the 100, I think it was 157 washes in totality for the entire day. And identifying the number of washes that would occur within the hour. So the maximum number was 20 washes that occurred at the 12:00 PM hour. So as indicated on our site plan, we're providing 14 queuing spaces, which would be essentially at any one time. So for the entirety of that hour, we would be well below the threshold of any queuing that would extend outward onto Baum Boulevard. Which was certainly brought up in our briefing portion of the project to make sure that there was no impact, serious impact to the Baum Boulevard quarter during a peak period of usage on the building. Go on to the next slide, please. So in addition to the previous renderings that were included in the briefing, it was asked to do a little bit more zoomed-out versions that indicated the project in its context. So this is a view of the project looking from the corner, roughly the corner of Millville and Baum Boulevard. Looking across Baum Boulevard at the structure as it's situated between the restaurant corner and the mini dealership in the background there. So again, taking kind of the indication of the building's arrangement relative to its neighbors as well as to the sort of setback requirements within the UNC and holding that build-to line. You feel that this is contextually appropriate, both from a height and arrangements of the building on its site itself. Next slide, please. This is a view from the opposite direction, looking at the, at the building as it's situated between, basically adjacent to the mini dealership. So you see the scrim element that's really extending out to the landscape buffer zone. As was mentioned on the site plan, and that's the combination of the scrim horizontal louvers and the concrete wall below. We also have horizontal louvers that sit on top of the structural steel frame. To create a trellis structure for a portion of that, of that frame. And as it extends back to the face of the building itself, there's a solid canopy that is both intended to kind of create a more, more defined structure as people exit from the car wash, but also to mitigate any sound travel that may occur from the fans internal of the building. Next slide, please. And then finally, a more zoomed-in version to give you an indication of the materiality in a more clear manner. Again, reiterating the mixture of materials being the aluminum plates as well as the polished masonry veneer. Cast placed concrete and then the painted aluminum sunshade trellis assembly and horizontal louvers. So with that, I would thank you very much for your time.
We appreciate the presentation. Now that you have concluded, it is time to take public testimony. At this time, if there is anyone that wishes to speak on this, we ask you to please raise your hand. If you're on the phone only, press star nine. State your name, spell your first and last name, and then identify where you live and any organization that you may be representing. And you have three minutes to share. Is there anyone with a hand raised?
What time is it? The time is 3:45 PM.
Did you say there were no hands raised?
There are no hands raised.
My apologies, thank you. Okay, given there are no hands raised at this time, commissioners.
Commissioners, before we shift to questions, can we do, can we try a technical sound check with Mr. Smith?
Sure.
Mr. Smith, you're off. Can you hear us? Mr. Smith, can you hear us? Okay, same situation, thank you.
You're welcome. I, I think that, oh, there we go, he's muted again. Because I figured he might start talking and doesn't know that he's talking, doesn't know that we can hear him. Commissioners, are there any comments with respect to this presentation? Hearing and seeing none from my fellow commissioners, we have a recommended motion for approval with conditions as stated in our report. Do we have a motion from the floor for approval with the noted conditions? Commissioner Dick, a motion, do we have a second?
Second. Commissioner Brown.
Commissioner Brown, second. All right, very good. So I'm going to do roll call. Commissioner Askey.
I.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Hi.
Commissioner Brown.
I.
Commissioner Burton Falk.
I.
Commissioner Dietrich.
Nay.
Commissioner Dick.
I.
And can, okay, so Commissioner Mingo, Mondor are not here and Commissioner O'Neill is recused. So the motion carries, passes. Thank you for the presentation and that concludes this portion of our meeting for today.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You have a great day.
You too.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so moving on to the final portion of our agenda, which is Agenda Item D under Plan of Lots. Mr. Shepke, you're here. I do understand that we will take these in two batches. That is correct?
That's correct. The first three items can be taken as a batch and then the last seven as a second batch.
Fantastic. Then I will read the first three. We will then take a vote and then I'll read in items four through 10 fair. Under Plan of Lots, items one through three, item one, DCP dash lot dash 2022 dash 00522. Shenley Center, major subdivision one, Upper Hill. Number two, DCP dash lot dash 2022 dash 00456 at 939 West North Avenue, major subdivision one, Allegheny West. Item three, DCP dash lot dash 2022 dash 0 Uh, item three, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty-two dash zero zero seven zero. University of Pittsburgh, major consolidation one, uh North Oakland. Mr. Shepkey.
Thank you. Uh, the first item is the Shenley Center subdivision. This is the subdivision of one parcel into two parcels. Lot one A would have four hundred and thirty feet of frontage on Bigelow Boulevard would be one hundred and forty-six thousand one hundred and thirty-nine square feet in area. Lot one B would have one hundred and seventy-one feet of frontage on Bigelow Boulevard. It could be twenty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-three square feet in area. An eight-story assisted living facility and a thirteen-story hotel are located on the subject property. And the recommended motion is to preliminarily approve the Shenley Center subdivision uh with final review scheduled for May third, twenty twenty-two. The next item is the West North Avenue subdivision. This is the subdivision of two parcels into seventeen parcels. Uh, the proposed lots one through seventeen would have frontage on West North Avenue. And lot sizes ranging from two thousand square feet to two thousand uh three hundred and seventeen square feet, as described in the staff report. A one-story building is located on the property that is currently used for a warehouse and office for a print shop, which is to be demolished. Uh, and the staff's recommended motion is to preliminarily approve the West North Avenue subdivision with final approval scheduled for May third, twenty twenty-two. And the next item is the University of Pittsburgh consolidation. This is the consolidation of four parcels into three parcels. The proposed parcel one subpart A would have one thousand thirty-eight feet of frontage on O'Hara Street. It would be one million three hundred and twenty thousand two hundred and fifty-five square feet in area. Proposed parcel one subpart B would have three hundred and forty feet of frontage on DeRah Street. It would be a hundred and forty-six thousand sixty-five square feet in area. Proposed parcel two would have three hundred and five feet of frontage on Parkman Avenue. It would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-six square feet in area. Several buildings are part of the University of Pittsburgh campus are located on the subject property. And the recommended motion is to preliminarily approve the University of Pittsburgh consolidation uh with final review scheduled on May third, twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepkey. Uh, at this time, we are asking for preliminary approval for items one through three. Uh, with a final approval, May third, twenty twenty-two. Uh, commissioners, do we have a motion for a preliminary approval?
Don't move.
Commissioner Brown, and then Commissioner uh Dietrich, thank you. Um, I'll go through on roll call. Commissioner Askey.
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk.
Aye.
Commissioner Dietrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Mingo and Mondor are not here, and Commissioner O'Neill.
Epstein.
Okay, uh, so that holds for carryover from May third, uh, final approval. Uh, now we're doing under Plan of Lots, uh, items four through ten. I'll read those in quickly. Uh, item four is DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one nine five. At Carnegie Street, minor subdivision, Upper Lawrenceville. Item five, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty-two dash zero zero four two seven at uh Lorraine Street, minor subdivision, Bloomfield. Item six, DCP lot dash twenty twenty-two dash zero zero four five four, Dawson Street, minor subdivision, Central Oakland. Item seven, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty-two dash zero zero five zero zero Oswego Street, minor consolidation, Brighton Heights. Item eight, DCP dash uh lot dash twenty twenty-two dash zero zero five twenty. Uh, Auburn Street, minor consolidation, Larmor. Uh, agenda item nine, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty-two at zero zero five two three, Mayflower Street, minor consolidation, uh, Larmor. Item ten, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty dash zero zero five five one, Pious Street, major consolidation two, south side slopes. Mr. Shepkey.
Thank you. Uh, this is the Carnegie Street subdivision. This is a subdivision of two parcels into six parcels. Proposed lots one through six would have frontage on McCandless Avenue. And it would have lot sizes ranging from one thousand two hundred and forty-seven square feet to one thousand six hundred and thirty-four square feet, as described in the staff report. A house is located on the subject property, which will be demolished, and the recommended motion is to approve the Carnegie Street subdivision. The next item is the Lorgan Street subdivision. This is a subdivision of two parcels into four parcels. The proposed unit A would have frontage on Lorgan Street would be one thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven square feet in area. The proposed unit B would have frontage on Sapphire Way would be one thousand two hundred and nine square feet in area. The proposed unit C would have frontage on Sapphire Way would be one thousand two hundred and nine square feet in area. And the proposed unit D would have frontage on Sapphire Way. It would be one thousand six hundred and seventy-four square feet in area. A five-foot wide pedestrian access easement would provide access to Lorgan Street for units B, C, and D. The subject property is currently vacant, and the staff's recommended motion is to approve the Lorgan Street subdivision. The next item is the Dawson Street subdivision. This is the subdivision of one parcel into two parcels. Proposed lot one would have twenty-five feet of frontage on Dawson Street would be three thousand four hundred and ninety-eight square feet in area. The proposed lot two would have twenty-five feet of frontage on Dawson Street. We three thousand four hundred and ninety-eight square feet in area. The subject property is currently vacant, and the recommended motion is to approve the Dawson Street subdivision. Um, the next item is the Oswego Street consolidation. The consolidation of two parcels into one parcel. The proposed law would have eighty feet of frontage on Oswego Street. It would be ten thousand four hundred square feet in area. A house is located on the subject property, and staff's recommended motion is to approve the Oswego Street consolidation. The next item is the Auburn Street consolidation. This is the consolidation of three parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot one would have seventy feet of frontage on Auburn Street would be seven thousand square feet in area. Uh, two houses are located on subject property. And the recommended motion is to approve the Auburn Street consolidation. The next item is the Mayflower Street consolidation. This is the consolidation of three parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot one would have seventy-two feet of frontage on Mayflower Street would be seven thousand nine hundred and nineteen square feet in area. The subject property is currently vacant, and the staff's recommended motion is to approve the Mayflower Street consolidation. And the last item on Plan of Lots is the Pious Street consolidation. This is the consolidation of three parcels into one parcel. Uh, the proposed lot one would have six hundred and thirty feet of frontage on Pious Street would be ninety-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-three square feet in area. A former school that is being redeveloped for multi-unit residential use is located on the subject property. And this is a major subdivision that was first reviewed by the planning commission on April fifth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, the recommended motion is to approve the Pious Street consolidation. And that concludes Plan of Lots. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepkey. At this time, items four through ten under Plan of Lots. Uh, do we have anyone that would like to testify uh from the public on these items? Are there any hands raised?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you very much. Okay, commissioners, uh, at this time, do we have a motion from the floor on Plan of Lots, items four through ten?
So.
All right, um, do I have a second?
Second.
Well, a very good. Thank you. Uh, so uh we'll do roll call. That is Commissioner Askey.
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk.
Aye.
Commissioner Dietrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners. Okay, that concludes agenda item D, Plan of Lots, under today's agenda. Our final uh item is item E under the agenda, which is director's report. Do we have a director's report or anything uh to add, Mr. Lehman?
Hello, um, I'll keep it short. Uh, but just a quick follow-up from uh Commissioner Dietrich's comments about construction management. Uh, we were actually able to pull some information for you that I think would be a good resource for the public. Uh, I wanted to share that. Um, and Kevin, if you're able to to pull that up. Uh, and just as a side note, um, this information comes from from Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. Uh, we review construction management plans and and sort of um approve them jointly between our two departments and our various purviews. The obstruction side of things is more on their side of the the line and and uh where we handle uh noise and staging a little bit more. Um, so depending on whether or not staging is on or off-site. Uh, but uh, yeah, this is um I wonder if there's a way we can post the link as well, or just put that on the screen. I know it's masked in the in the bar there. Uh, but it's under the interactive maps uh uh website. Um, and I think you can, if you looked for city of Pittsburgh, Domi road obstructions or just road obstructions, I think you would find it. Um, yeah, but uh, and then it gives you information about where there are obstructions.
It looks great.
Thank you, and thanks for uh for calling that to our attention.
If I can't find the link, um, I'll, I'll, I'll send you a note. Looks just what we're looking for. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, for continued uh team, your staff, uh, being very thorough and definitely for sharing that with us all before we leave today.
All credit goes to my staff.
Well, we appreciate your team. Um, if there's nothing else to add, uh, you know, at this time, we would take a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a great week, everyone.
Have a nice week, everyone.
Good job. Stay warm, stay well.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you.